Okay, so we're at seven o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one City of Columbiana City Council Meeting. I'd like to ask Diane to give us the invocation and I will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Diane?
Lord, we ask for your presence and your blessing tonight on our community and on our nation. Be with our leaders and our volunteers as they serve our communities. Give them wisdom as they make decisions to keep our citizens safe and bring peace and unity to our nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane, will you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Powder?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Totilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay, thank you. You have all received a copy of the January fifth, twenty twenty-one City of Columbiana City Council minutes in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next on the agenda, we have reading of communications and I would like to take this minute to read a proclamation. Whereas Brian Blakeman served as a city council member from January two thousand ten through December two thousand thirteen, and in January two thousand fourteen, he became mayor of the City of Columbiana, serving until December fifteenth, twenty twenty. And during his term as mayor, he fulfilled his duty on the planning commission. Whereas he was notably involved in progressive decisions for the City of Columbiana and its citizens and was instrumental in promoting the city during its selection by Reader's Digest as the nicest place in America, along with the designation as the Hallmark Christmas Town. And whereas he exhibited true dedication, distinction to planning and growth of a constantly evolving and expanding community and advocated for programs and services that have enhanced the vibrancy of the city, including but not limited to the establishment of the CRA tax abatement and DORA programs, the recording of televising of city meetings, making financial information available to the public, working with the schools to grant long-term use of the stadium at Firestone Park and the widening of Route seven and fourteen to accommodate growth and development of the Firestone Farms area. Whereas he has earned the admiration, high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants. Whereas he has willingly and notably demonstrated dedication of purpose for the advancement of the City of Columbiana and for economic and aesthetic development of the business environment and the residents equally. And now therefore, we, the council for the City of Columbiana, do hereby proclaim our appreciation to Brian Blakeman and do further express our friendships and good wishes to Brian for his dedicated years of service to the city and its citizens dated this nineteenth day of January twenty twenty-one, Rick Noel. So I wanted to present that proclamation and hope. It used to be easy. Yeah, congratulations. And.
Thank you, guys.
Brian for all he did for us.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I hope we got on to hear it.
I'm here.
It used to be easy in the old days when we all sat in city council, we could sign the proclamation and it'd be done, but not tonight. We'll have to get carrier pigeons to send around to all your homes so we can get that signed. So thank you very much. We have, next, we have reports of commissions and board. You have the planning commission meeting minutes of January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. I would, and I don't think we have any persons to be recognized to desire to appear in front of us tonight. Do we have anyone? Lance?
No.
That you're aware of?
No.
Thank you. Next, we have the manager's report. Lance?
Thanks, Mayor. So we scheduled another CRA negotiating committee meeting to consider another application. We also offered A-plus powder coders, an offer for CRA, and they got back to us and we're gonna be moving forward on that. So we'll be coming to you and the school board for that one and maybe another one soon. The assessment center that we've been talking about for the finding of a new chief will take place this weekend and our committee will meet sometime next week, probably. The auditors have completed the twenty nineteen audit and we'll be holding our exit audit soon. You'll be getting an email if you haven't already in the next couple of days regarding that, you know, time. And again, it'll be a Zoom meeting. We did, we did work on the wording for the planning commission and what happened there with regarding the conditional use in an R1, and we did get that on there today and I appreciate my office staff and Mark for putting, put a lot of time into that today. We're starting a park and pool study, which will take about a year. This is very similar to a project that we did with the water and sewer department recently, probably, I think eighteen, nineteen, we did that for the water department. We're looking forward to that. You find out a lot of things that might not necessarily see that are right in front of you. So we're working on that. You'll be hearing about that process, you know, throughout. We've been working on two stormwater grants and we really wanna thank Ohio EMA for walking us through that. We've met each individual deadline as it's come up and we're at the final stage. We're gonna hit submit probably tomorrow and then we'll find out later this year, see how well we did. The Salem Street Stormwater Project should be going out to bid very soon and will start soon after that. Oh, giving update on the Mets Road Lift Station Elimination Project. Didn't get too much done this year. We had a couple other projects sneak up on us, but we're still working on that and right now we're focusing on the easement attainment, but hopefully twenty twenty-one, we can get something done there. As discussed at the planning commission, I know a lot of you were already on there. There is a talk of a sewer extension out near County Line Road. Do have a developer that's interested in putting that in and will be, it's probably gonna be a cost-sharing project for those that, you know, would benefit from that and we'll be working on that in twenty twenty-one as well. We've, we set our training for the technical upgrades as council chambers. I believe it's just for the office staff in the next few days and then probably early next week, we'll get the technical committee in there to take a look and maybe we can do some mock, mock Zoom meetings. But we are waiting on one piece of equipment, but I don't think it's gonna hold us up long term. We do have another grant deadline coming up for, for ODOT and that's at the end of January and we see no problems meeting that and then we should find out relatively soon about how we did on that. Streets Department, as you can imagine, we've been plowing and sawing as needed. We did put fifteen tons of cold patch down for those potholes. Water Department, we did fix a couple mainline water breaks, thanks to the crews for their commitment on those. For wastewater, we did perform, we cleaned some lines and performed some maintenance on the oxidation ditch. Park and Cemetery, as we're talking, they did a really good job of getting those Joy of Christmas displays down and I believe everything's wrapped up with that, so we appreciate that. The letters for the twenty twenty-one rentals did go out and I think those have been pretty successful. Electric Department, GPD is working on the SCADA for the North Substation and that project should be finishing up. And I believe that's the only, I think that's everything I had. I don't know if, if you all saw the article in the Kent Repository, it was really good. I don't think we could have written it any better and I didn't know it was happening, but that's just the great things that's happening downtown has been great and we thank the Kent Repository for doing that story and we do thank the store owners who are involved in that, landlords, and I know Patty Roller has been, she's one of our storefront owners that has been great about getting other businesses in here and filling up these storefronts and I just wanted to give a hats off to her. I think she had a part in many of those little articles that were in there. So if you haven't seen the Kent Repository article, reach out to me, I'll text it to you. So that's it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Any questions for the mayor or for the city manager?
Eliot, I had a couple real quick on the chambers thing. What, have you addressed or talked about how we're gonna handle executive sessions in, in that kind of an environment?
Yeah, I mean, they're aware of those. I would definitely mark that for, for the training.
Okay, that's fine.
I know that there's gonna be a special monitor for people wishing to appear, so again, I haven't, it will be addressed, but I'm not sure how.
Right, that's fine. And then the other question I had was, you had mentioned possibly having the health department come in to look at it. Have you thought about doing that anymore? It might be.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. Once the tech committee gets in there, you know, we talked to the health department a lot, so it's not a big deal. We got them on speed dial, so they're, they're in here a lot and we'll definitely, you know, think about that, trying to get them in here.
Okay, sounds good. That's it, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. There's a, on the agenda here, it talks about an EMS department report for December twenty twenty. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding that matter? Okay, hearing none. You received the bill list for one nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Okay, I have no old business to report tonight to have on the agenda, so I'd like to move to new business and seek a motion that due to their length, we asked to read the ordinance and resolution by title only.
So moved. Second.
Motion? Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, Liston seconded.
Okay. Can we call the roll, Diane?
Becker?
Yes.
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Totilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Ordinance number twenty-one dash oh dash thirty sixty-four. This is a first reading. An ordinance amending section five point two of the Policies and Procedures Manual of the City of Columbiana, Ohio. It's our motion. Motion. And a second. Any discussion or comment on this motion to, to vote on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Diane, will you call the roll?
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Totilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. It'll move to the second reading. Now, we have a resolution number twenty-one dash R dash five sixty-three. This is a first reading. A resolution amending sections twelve seventy point oh-two B of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of Columbiana, Ohio.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And there's a second. Okay, we can discuss this resolution. I know you just received this today, so any of you may have questions or comments or Mark might wanna clarify anything regarding this, this resolution?
I, I do have one question. Looking at it, I think it talks about professional services or uses the term professional services. I looked through our definitions and so on and I didn't find anything that defined what we meant by professional services. And it seems like that, that may be something that's well-understood, but it seems like having a list of things that we consider professional services might be beneficial and it might prevent sometime in the future someone walking in and having something that they feel is professional service or may qualify under that, which actually we might think is something else. And I'm just wondering if that's something that we think we ought to try to define for the ordinance?
We could certainly, you know, I'll, I'll take that. Professional offices is, you know, a term that seemed to be a little bit more descriptive than general offices and general offices actually was discussed back on November third at council and then the planning commission discussed that also. So we tried to define it somewhat, but we certainly could. And Dick, I would agree with you. I can't find the definition anywhere in the code for professional offices. That said, we could add that to the definitional section under twelve sixty. You know, we could look at what that would entail. You know, law offices, obviously, insurance offices, but some of those things are already defined in other areas. That's, you know, but we could do that if council wants us to, not a problem.
Well, I, obviously, since I brought it up, I think it's worth doing, but.
Yep. I know.
Let me, let me ask a crazy off-the-wall question here. Let's say somebody come in, they wanna do a massage parlor. Is that a professional services?
Well, it's professional offices, so my interpretation would be no, but as Dick said, possibly would make sense to define what we include within that term, which obviously we can do that. You know, in doing so, we have to make sure we don't run afoul of any other provisions, but we certainly, you certainly do have, I think, the ability to define that if you so choose.
I, I think it's a good find, Dick, and good catch. I, I certainly think it needs to be done because I just brought up massage parlor as a, an example, a crazy example, but you don't know what somebody would come up with on that. So, yeah, I think Dick's exactly right. It needs to be defined.
But I just thought about it from the standpoint of, you know, I spent a lot of time working for consulting engineering companies and things like that, which I would not necessarily consider a professional service. The same as like a lawyer or a doctor or dentist and an accountant, something like that. So I just think that there, there's a small list of things that ought to be included and I don't think we need to exclude anything specifically. I just think we need to say, these are the things that are, that are included in professional offices. But I think we could, I don't even know that we need to do that to pass that. That could always be added later after we give it a little more thought.
Could we do it before the second reading?
I think we could.
Can, because we can actually, you know, you can vote to amend that resolution and we can actually amend it. Before the second reading, but just understand, this resolution that would be made tonight would be being certified to planning commission so that they can consider it at their, it's February ninth meeting. And at the same time, it would then hopefully be reported back to council at your meeting on the sixteenth, I believe it is, with the idea that we are then able to schedule a public hearing for March sixteenth. So if we make changes, that may move us back into April, but I don't know that that's necessarily a real problem. That's just something to be aware of.
Just to clarify too, planning commission could make that change as well, right? As part of their recommendation?
Yes, but if planning commission changes that, then the question becomes, and I'm not gonna, you know, say I know the exact answer, but then does it come back to council? Because once we start changing things too much within zoning ordinances, then it would come back to council, I believe, for what would be, is that now a new resolution? So it might be better if council actually, planning commission right now has made a motion. So at this point, council passes a resolution. That resolution then goes back to planning commission for consideration. Yes, they could amend it, but if they make amendments to it and send it back to you, you may be back to a first reading on it.
We make a motion to, tonight to approve it with a request to planning commission to define what professional services are. And then, I mean.
Cause that's. What I'll say is, I think that would work. My only question is, are we gonna be, because the text of this resolution has to be available for thirty days prior to the public hearing. So if planning commission does define it, they'd be defining something different than plant, than was sent to them by council.
Well, but.
I mean, the resolution rather, sorry. What, my point is, I think the resolution would then be different than what council certified to them. That's my only concern.
Mark, isn't the resolution and then also the report from the planning commission, those both have to be posted for thirty days, right?
Planning commission reports back to you within thirty days.
Right, but doesn't, doesn't the planning commission's report have to be available for public viewing for thirty days as well?
It's basically the text, it's, it's basically then the text of the resolution that's available for viewing. So my concern is, what happens if planning commission changes it? Then I think it has to come back to council. So now are we moving planning commission's consideration of, is then is council certifying an amended resolution? That's my concern.
I thought that both had to be available.
So if they, if they look at it on the ninth, we have to have the resolution available and posted by February eighteenth, but.
Okay.
And it has to be published also.
So, so here's, here's the text from the charter. Each ordinance or resolution establishing, amending, revising shall be referred to the planning commission immediately after its first reading. Within thirty days, planning commission shall cause such ordinance or resolution be returned to the clerk of council together with the written recommendations. You know what I lost, what I'd read the first time? I thought that they both had to be available for public viewing.
Planning commission is technically reporting back
Right.
on the resolution that was certified them to. If you look at it this way, the report back from planning commission could be that they basically passed a recommendation recommending the adoption of that resolution.
Diane, the timeframe that you're talking about is sixty days that
Yes.
city council has to act after the recommendation. Maybe that's, maybe that's what you were thinking, Dan.
You know, that's not what I thought I read, but I might have just read two different things and commingled them, so that's why.
Where would, where would this definition normally show up?
If you, put it this way, it could possibly show up in that section, but there's general definitional sections under zoning too. If you start looking through the code, you'll see definitions aren't always in the definitional section.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was wondering. Why can't we, why can't we pass this with the, with the remark that that is to be defined and put in the definition section of the planning and zoning? So this stays pure, we can go ahead and pass that and we can put the definition in later.
I guess the question would be whether or not that definition would have to go through the public hearing and all that sort of stuff as well.
Because the definition, yeah, my concern is, are we then, because now we're, in essence, making another amendment. And if we're making a second amendment, I think Dick's absolutely right. Now we're gonna have another public hearing and another publication, so I'd rather get it all done at once.
Well, we wouldn't be amending.
To even slow the process down if we have to, just so we get everything in at the same time and don't have to do publication twice, notice twice and hearing twice.
Let me, let me just ask the question. Can we define right now among us what we think are the major professional services that we wanna include? I mean, I would think law, accounting, doctors, dentist, maybe eye care.
Doctor, dentist and eye care are already covered.
Could we just say professional services?
Well, that's, the question is, what are professional services?
No, it's, it's professional offices.
Yeah. It says, yeah, right now it says professional offices.
Yeah.
Well, we could, you can certainly, there's a motion on the floor, you can amend the motion, I suppose, that we define or further define in the resolution what those professional, what the professional offices definition includes.
Well, so I mean, I would think legal, accounting. What else you guys think of?
What about real estate?
Already covered in the other section.
Architecture.
Sorry, Rick?
I suggested real estate.
Real estate. And Mark, if we, if we phrase it with like a such as, then that would leave some availability for planning commission to go beyond, right?
Pardon?
If we were to phrase it such as professional offices, such as legal, et cetera, et cetera, that would give the planning commission a little bit of leeway, right?
It would.
Cause there's other places where it's such as in there.
There are. I, I mean, there's a lot of terms that are not defined in our code. And when I, you know, decided professional offices sounds better than general, I still thought, well, let's see if that's defined. It's not. So is it a good idea? So is it a good idea to define it? Yes, I think it makes perfect sense to do that. You could say such as Planning Commission would have the right to further define, but I guess the question I have, and I have an answer in my own mind is, if they change what that resolution is, because they're making a recommendation. So where are we now back in the process? Does that recommendation have to come back to you for an amendment to the motion? And that's something, Dan, that I'm, you know, questioning in my own mind. I don't want to give a final answer because I need to think about that a little bit. But my initial thought is, that's exactly what we'd have to do.
I, I think we, the, our best course of action to try to keep this short and sweet, I mean, the, getting the process short and sweet would be to, to define it with a such as or something like that. Put in four or five examples that are, that seem obvious to us and then let Planning Commission kick it back if they want to.
And if they are satisfied with those, then we actually have a resolution that has passed its first reading. We can then publish, we can then make the text available for the thirty day hearing and we should be able to still hold the hearing on March sixteenth.
What's the worst case scenario? We push it back thirty days, right?
Exactly. And, and, you know, if you want to be safe rather than sorry later, that's certainly a thought.
It would actually be two weeks if we, if we came back to it in two weeks.
Yeah.
And, and I did, you know, I looked up professional office in Law Insider and they talk about lawyer office, architect, surveyor, engineer, a planner, real estate agent, investment counselor or chartered accountant.
I love it.
Let's go with that list.
Yeah.
Move to amend the resolution with that definition.
Yep.
Second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to amend the motion to add those items which Lance just said. Any discussion on the amendment?
Dan, I can read those back to you.
You can either read it back to me or text it to me, one of the two, but so if you could read it again.
Yeah, I can, I can text it to you.
Texting would be fine. That's good.
I'd like to hear them again.
Okay, ready? Offices of lawyer, architect, surveyor, engineer, a planner, a real estate agent, investment counselor or chartered accountant. And just for the sake of conversation, it goes on to say, it does not include other personal services like, like Skip pointed out, but we don't need to put that in there.
Yeah, I, my advice would be stay away from those because you're getting into some areas that.
Well, and, and let's not forget, we do have a, a much maligned section in the code that prohibits things that aren't specifically permitted, so.
Right. That's why I don't really want to start repeating it in this section because that could give us some problems.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Define what it is and I think leave out what it's not. That could be my recommendation.
Is there any more questions to the motion for the amendment? Hearing none, I'll ask Deanne to call the roll.
Okay, and this is for the amendment. McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Stan?
Powder?
Yes.
Okay, now roll call on the resolution as amended. Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
No.
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. So the resolution with the amendment have passed first reading. So that can be sent on to the Planning Commission. Very good. Any other new business that anyone has at this point? Otherwise, is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment to the council at this time? Do we have anyone?
Rick, Brian Blakeman.
Yes.
I just want to, again, thank you all this evening for the proclamation. It was an honor. I've, I've been on the other end giving some, but first time in my life I've received one. It, it, it meant a lot to me. It's been an interesting several weeks adjusting, getting, getting used to not being in, involved at the, the same level. Today was, was Mayor's Court and we had a couple of questions and I had completely forgotten that it was. So I guess that's a good, good thing. But my, my mind has definitely been in, in other, other places, but I, I miss you all and just wanted to thank you again for doing that.
Well, Brian, we thank you for the tutoring and all the wonderful things that you've done for us and for the city.
Thanks, Skip.
Yeah, thank you very much and we appreciate you, your comments you've made there, Brian and I'm sure we're all gonna, you know, still seek your advice and direction. And I know you still love the city of Columbia and want to do the best things for it like all of us do, so we look forward to continuing our relationship. Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone from the public wishing to make some comments? And I'm not hearing any, so now I'll ask for the time for our council comments. Any of our council members want to make a comment tonight? Really? No comments? I, I just want to stress that I think that article in the Camp Repository is definitely worth reviewing. And it was so great to see how articulate our business people downtown have spoken and how they're working together. I think it's tremendous to see the cooperation there and we look forward to keeping things going downtown. So I think it's great.
Lance, could you forward that to me, please?
Absolutely.
Seconded there, I'd like to see a copy of it, please.
Okay.
Actually, Amber did put the link in the chat for this session, if you guys want to look at it.
But, okay, I see the chat, okay.
Yeah, so either way.
Okay, any other comments to come before council tonight? Hearing none, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Have a great night.